Well, seeing that it's 7:05.
I'm buying that for today.
The Zoning Board of Appeals meeting is recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube. Our first petition is 992 for 657 and 659 A Mount Ponsett Street, special permit for an in-law.
Sure. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, June 12th, 2023 at 7:00 in the Board of Celebents Meeting Room at Halifax Sound Hall, 49 Plymouth Street, Halifax, on the application by Vishnu Patel for a special permit for an in-law apartment located at 657 and 659 A Mount Ponsett Street, Halifax. Said property is owned by Deli Realty Trust of 655 Mount Ponsett Street, Halifax, as shown on Assessor's Map 19, Lot 866, Book 646, Page 67. The applicant is seeking a special permit for an in-law apartment as this project would violate Halifax zoning by law 167-7012, Schedule of Use Regulations. The area is zoned residential commercial. Petition is number 992.
Who's here for the permit? You want to tell us what you want to do?
When we bought the property like three, four years ago, it was already the house, with the house next to that, that really was in a bad condition. So before we go in, I need to get a, like, renovate the whole house. And there was a kitchen on that side, was rented before by the previous owner. And so we took everything out and we got, we started the work. And the building inspector said, like, you need to get a permit to put a kitchen on that side too. And you have to go through the zoning board and with the in-laws. So we are not asking the building anything. It's the same layout, it's the same thing. And so, so, so that we can, like, renovate that side too.
Is somebody else going to live in there from your family?
Yeah, from my family.
They're going to be sharing the same septic, electrical, water?
Electric, everything. So it's only one mirror, it's a, it's a one electric mirror, it's a one, one, everything is going to be shared with us.
You're doing renovations, do you have any plans or anything for that? Or you're just kind of doing?
We have some renovations when we start the house, house renovations. I don't know if this application is needed or not, but...
Is that across the street from the church?
No.
What is it?
Next to the lycad.
Next to the lycad, 650 Mount, please. Red and Hanson, help me back forward. So, yeah, it's right next to the same block.
I know where you are.
Yeah, same block. Everything was there, we're just trying to do everything the right way and try, trying to correct everything.
You say, then our bathroom was already there?
Yeah, it was already there before. But, but it was not, but it was somehow, previous owner didn't do anything. So we are, I'm trying to, trying to fix everything, trying to go the right way.
Okay, so he did not, you know, they did not get a...
I don't know.
Current files?
I don't know. You know, it's with me, so, so I'm just trying my best to get everything filed the right way, everything proper way, and that's it. What is existing already, but I told my contractor, I said, like, you know, let me just go ask them, so we can do the right way, right? Everything should be filed.
Yeah, we really need a layout showing where the living space is, where the shared space is.
It's a one-bedroom, and it's really, like, small, small.
It's tiny.
The bedroom is, yeah, so tiny, so tiny.
I mean, we need to know the square foot, so, you know, there's rules that we have to go by. Without having a drawing, we can't, we can't determine that.
I know, yes. So let me get a plan and everything, and show you the drawings.
We need a set of plans that's showing where everything's going, where it's going to be, where the in-law apartment is going to be, and where the kitchen is, where the bathroom is.
Yeah.
And the shared living space.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do you want me to get only in-laws, or the...
Well, we need the whole.
The whole layout of the house, the whole layout of the house.
Yeah.
Where you're going to live.
Yeah, the bylaws require, we can't approve it until there's shared living space between the two.
Of course.
Which if it's already set up, it might be set up that way already. And the shared utility, which you said is already the case, immediate family member, which you said was already the case, but we need to be able to just see the layout, so we know it's shared space and the square footage, just so it meets all the requirements of the bylaw.
And if any of the members want to visit the site, I will be, check if you guys know, I get, or something, if that's an option too, if you guys want.
The wrong site or something.
If not, I can have the plans.
Yeah, if we have the plans, we probably don't need to go up there, right?
No.
Like, that's, so that'll help.
Okay.
Once you show us the plans, where everything's going to go on the property, where the house, you know, where the in-law is going to be, where the kitchen and all the rest of the stuff, and where the shared living, that will be, that we can see what we're voting on. We can't vote on something that we don't have in front of us.
We don't know. Well, I understand that. Thank you.
So we can continue until...
Yeah.
Anybody want to make a motion to continue?
I'll make a motion to continue petition number...
992.
992, to July, I don't know what I mean.
It says on the agenda, isn't it, it said 10th, July 10th?
10th, July 10th.
July 10th?
Yep.
At 7:00 PM?
Yep.
Yeah. I'll say it. Yeah, no, go for it.
Okay, so it's just a plot plan with the house.
Yeah.
Yeah, and a layout inside too, just so we see the layout.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Imagine, so we know, you know, what your size of anything is.
Yeah, my contractor will draw up something, I'm sure.
Okay, that's perfect, yeah.
He'll have something.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you too.
The next one? You're welcome. Seeing that it's 7, almost 7:14. Petition 984.
It's listed as commercial.
Yeah, it said it must be in the line or something. It said residential income.
It was, it was used for an apartment.
That's what you said, yeah.
It was probably, like, the owners had the people that worked there living there or something.
Yeah, under the radar. One of the...
Yeah, under the radar.
Should I be real slow, I guess? So if you're doing, should I read real slow?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right, where am I?
Please.
984, right? Yeah. The Halifax zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing on Monday, January 9th, 2023 at 7:05 PM in the Board of Celebents Meeting Room at Halifax Sound Hall, 499 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Mass, on the application by James Rodriguez for a special permit and variance to raise, rebuild, and expand a damaged structure located at 9 Lake Street, Halifax, Mass, 02338. Said property is owned by James Rodriguez of 9 Lake Street, Halifax, Mass, 02338, on the, as shown on Assessor's Map 20, Lot 1533, Book 47552, Page 91. The applicant is speaking, seeking a special permit to raise, rebuild, and expand damaged, non-conforming structure in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Chapter 167-8A continuation, 167-8C extension, and 167-8D restoration by adding a second story to a portion of the structure. Per the building inspector, quote, "The proposed dwelling exceeds 50% of the original area, exceeds the original height, and is closer to the street," end quote. The applicant is also seeking the variance to reduce the foundation height requirement in accordance with the Town of Halifax zoning bylaws, Chapter 167-10 General Density Regulations. The area is zoned residential, and is petition number 984. Any other on this?
Well, we got a... You got to hear that one too.
I texted out.
Yeah, it's...
All right about that.
Do you want to swap these?
I think, I saw it was in the sixth inning, I was like, come on, don't, don't call him, Aubrey's up.
Nobody would hit it when you called it. Did they win?
No.
Oh.
They were number one the whole season.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Who'd you play? Who'd you play, Marshfield Kingston?
Kingston? It was Kingston. It was just a basketball game, like, when we played wayman.
What's that now?
Is it probably that way? No, they're saying it was on a different, different screen from the second one.
It is, it's the same as...
Well, no. It's similar. It's similar.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just trying to say that we can move it, but it doesn't make any difference because property is always, yeah, value, property is.
That's me.
It's pretty simple, isn't it?
Maybe more, might as well include these in the record too.
What's that?
Might as well include those in the record, just to see. That's the completeness, Oak Place file. I mean, I guess in the end it comes down to whether you believe in a nonsubstantial or...
Oak Place is the same situation, and when they found it, for you.
And I don't believe it is. Right now, I have some very large trees.
On Oak, on Oak Place, it says 167... -8A, right? On your, on your application is 167-8.
Well, I enumerated all, all three of the, all three of the, the sections of the bylaw. 8A, 8C, 8D, and 10K.
Well, on this application, we went through by 167-8A, right?
Yes.
We granted this application under this, under this bylaw, 167-8A.
Well, no, your decision included 8D. They didn't ask for it, but you gave it to them. They didn't ask for a special, a variance at all for 167-8D. They were given one as, in the decision.
You remember this one? It was in 2019, right?
I don't know whether it was...
Yeah, it was in 2019, that's...
They didn't ask for any variance. You gave them one.
It must have been on the application. We, we don't, we don't give anybody a variance without, unless they ask for it.
You have the application, it's not on the application.
Well, we have to bring out the application.
The appeal seeks a special permit and variance, they did ask for one.
They asked for a variance.
They asked for a variance for the setback line, they didn't ask for variance for the height. They were given the variance for the height, because the board determined that they would need one in order to do the expansion, because their variance...
The application only says for a variance setback, it doesn't ask for a variance of the height. You're asking for the variance of the height.
What I'm trying to explain is that they didn't ask for it. In the process of giving them the expansion, you also gave them a variance because they were adding a second story. So they didn't ask for it, they were given it as a function of the decision.
We gave them a variance of a setback.
Not only did they write variance in their application, the denial letter, the denial letter from the building inspector said variance for height. And...
On the height.
The decision letter makes reference to variance from a height restriction in 167-8D.
Which is exactly what I had.
So, so not only, what I'm, what you're saying is that they didn't ask it, we just handed it out, they asked for it, it was in the denial letter and it's in the letter, all the same way.
They would have to ask for it, they would also have to be publishing the paper and...
Yes, I do.
Yeah.
Right?
So they would have to ask for the variance, we can't just give it out if it's not asked.
They, and for what they asked for, we gave them.
Okay.
For the height and with the setbacks.
Okay, I didn't see in their application, they asked for a variance on the, they did ask for a variance.
They asked for a variance.
Yes, I do.
They asked for, you know, because the house burnt down, they asked for it.
So they also don't have a view behind them, correct?
Everybody has a view.
Yeah, they do.
A water view behind them?
Yep. I'm reading the meeting minutes.
This is the one on the corner there, right?
Everybody has a view to somebody. I mean, right now, there's no view from the street to the lake from my house, because I have some very large trees that are behind, behind the house that are...
Oak Place, right?
Higher than the, than the new...
Directly versus 32 on this one, this one, have a lake view.
Where is Oak Place? Where is Oak Place?
Silver on Crystal Lake.
It's off of...
36?
Oak Street.
So, I mean...
36.
Playing devil's advocate here. One of the differences is they were only adding 100 square feet to their house, not completely doubling the size of the house.
Well, again, that's a portion of the second story.
No, and it is, but that's part of what's in the bylaws, because it's not to exceed 50, more than 50%. That, I think, is part of the sticky point. I don't think anybody maybe here, and I may be speaking out of turn, but I don't think anybody cares if the height increases, because your neighbors don't seem to care.
Well, no.
We do understand that there's not really any other place for you to be, but you did buy it in 2013, no, in a 627 square foot house.
Yes.
Now you're doubling it.
Now you're doubling it.
Well, it's 10 years later.
It is 10 years later, yes, but I don't think anybody here buys their house on a postage stamp expecting to double the size of it.
Well, again, Halifax has several hundred non-conforming structures.
I know, and that's why I said I'm playing devil's advocate here.
Many of them have been expanded to more than double the size. I didn't do an extensive list because it seems, it seems petty to go through every doubling of size.
It is, no, I get it, but sometimes that's something that you have to point out, if it's...
Yeah, again, it's, 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 it's not much bigger appearing from the street, other than the sub that has the second story.
Right.
I don't think it's detrimental at all to the neighborhood, let alone substantially detrimental to the neighborhood. I think it's a, I think it's an asset to improve that house to the neighborhood and everybody that drives by it. Again, the, the views that exist now, pretty much preserved. I'm not changing the height over half of the, of the structure, it's just over one piece, and that's currently blocked from a fairly large poplar tree that's over, over the height of the new, the new...
Can't see the new.
The new. So, I mean, obviously you can find all kinds of reasons to deny. And, but, but as I look at it, yes, I'm asking for an expansion, and yes, I'm asking to change the roof line. Roof line could be changed regardless, but I can't add the space under it without, without a special...
But you're doubling, you're doubling the size of the house.
Well, I can get, I'd have to look at exactly what the numbers are, but...
You're going from 659 to 13 something.
Yeah, it's almost double.
Yeah, it doubled.
You're keeping the footprint the same, you're just...
Going up.
His problem is he has no space to go anywhere else.
But I don't think I can decide to, half of the, half of the house, well, it's not entirely of this. There've been a number that have just, you know, gone up a full story and a half with a special permit, but I don't have any interest in doing that. I just need a little bit more space, and I'd like a second bath. But beyond that, you know, I could certainly, I could certainly make it smaller, but I'm not going to make it lower. And that's, that's the issue. Again, the, I don't, I don't believe it's, it's detrimental to the neighborhood, and that becomes the, you know, the ultimate question in any decision from the ZVA when granting a variance or an expansion, they should talk to us.
Well, under, under 167-8D, it appears that the proposed addition story will result in the proposed structures exceeding the original height of the structure, therefore, under the zoning bylaw, the structures may find that it is not permitted, and the ZVA may probably deny a special permit to construct a proposed structure.
Because of the variance it was.
What's that?
Because of the variance it was. I've requested a variance for that height enhancement.
But you didn't request a variance.
It was on my application. You requested a special permit.
No, I think, I think it's...
You requested a special permit to, to, to do it. We, we came back and you, we asked you not to do a variance, and you said, well, we'll stay in the same footprint. The last time we talked, we, you said you will stay in the same footprint.
I moved you back.
And you will go up.
Because of...
But now, now, 67-8D, you're going up, you're doubling the size.
Right.
And under the bylaw, it's not permitted.
I modeled it after the Oak Place, and I asked for a special permit and a variance on the application. The variance was too full. The variance you requested was for the foundation height, not the house. There were variances for the, there was a variance for the height request on the foundation, there was a variance on the front setback, and there was a variance for the height of the structure.
So what would be your hardship for that variance?
Just the topography of the land.
To go up?
Well, because...
It's the size of the lot.
Because of, well, because of the, it's the size of the lot and the, and the proximity to a drinking water lake. There's additional setbacks there that most people don't have.
So why not build four stories?
I'm sorry?
Why not have variance for build four stories? That wouldn't preclude that either, right?
Yeah, you could.
You, you could ask for that.
Yeah, you could ask for that. And there are some very large houses on, on Wamsetta that are, you know, were clearly expanded beyond the cottage neighborhood that exists. I don't want a McMansion, you know, I pretty much want the same footprint with, with some additional space upstairs for an office and a bathroom. That's all I'm...
I don't, I don't think what you're asking is, is unreasonable.
Do you believe that it's substantially detrimental to the neighborhood?
No, what I, what I, the sticking point in the last meeting and the sticking point in this meeting is that the bylaws say that you can't. It says that, and the building inspector sent that, exact, like, it exceeds 50% of the original area, exceeds the height, and is closer to the street, the variant, that...
But again, that's why I brought the, the Oak Place situation up, because it's virtually identical in terms of a damaged structure, adding a second story and requiring the variance for the height under 167-8D. But your application lists a variance for the foundation height at the height of the house. I don't think that's actually... We have it right here, the way I read it. This applicant is seeking a special permit to raise, rebuild, and expand a damaged, non-conforming structure. The structure will expand by adding a second story, second story to a portion of the structure, and the proposed request for variance for 167-10K to reduce the foundation height requirement. So variance specifically says height requirement for the foundation, not the structure. Well, again, I, I think that, I think that there's, there's a disjoint in what's being, what's being requested, because I think that there's a requirement based on the building inspector's letter, which is why I'm here for the variance and the special permit, that I need the special permit to, to build a second story. I don't think, I don't think most of the applications that you have enumerate all of the variances, but I certainly listed them all on my application of all of the, all of the offending bylaws involved. 8A, 8C, 8D, and 10K. 10K is now moved, because I'll, I'll keep the foundation height wherever the building inspector wants, so that's not an issue. Building inspector's letter about the front setback is also not important, because I've relocated the structure and maintain the same line. So the only remaining issues are 8A, as far as I can tell, and 8D, uh, 9, I'm sorry, 9D.
That you're doubling, that you're doubling by going up.
Yes, there was an expansion, absolutely, and that's why I need the special permit. You know, I think that I could change the roof tomorrow to what I wanted it to be, but I couldn't use the space. So I have to ask for a special permit to use the space either way.
But under 167-8D, you can't.
I'm sorry?
Under 167-8D, you can't.
I can't?
That's what it says.
Well, yes, I need a variance on that.
Yeah.
Right, which is why it would have been requested. Again, it mirrors the Oak Place file, and if you, if you look at the application...
I don't, I don't, I don't know about that. I, like, I'm not saying any plans here, I can look back, I guess, and, you know, we can look at that, I mean, there...
I mean, they, they asked for both an expansion and an intended variance on the height. They had this, pretty much the same letter that I had, other than the setbacks were being different, they asked for multiple variances on the setbacks, which, which I'm not asking.
Plus, it was a lot, a lot bigger than what you have.
And it, it sounds like what they were asking for is a lot less than the expansion
They're asking for about 100 square feet.
that you're asking for significantly.
Well, the, the, the square footage that I'm asking for is gross square footage. There's a stairway that's, that's fairly large. There's a, there's a bathroom upstairs. It's not living space per se, but it's just a gross estimate, a gross number predicated on what an assessor would, would assess it as. So it's, it's basically two rooms. It's not, it's not...
The two rooms are equal, are equal to the first floor?
No. No, they're, they're equal to about two-thirds of the first floor, about two-thirds of the first floor. Because you've got, you know, you've got sloped ceilings and everything else. Usable spaces is, is much less inside the gate. I mean, I, in the end, I, I just don't think it's detrimental to the neighborhood.
I don't think it is either, but it's a, it's a lot, it's a huge expansion. And it's not like it's been in the family for your entire life. Like, you bought it knowing it's a tiny house. I guess that's just kind of how...
Yeah, and you, you made a good point, to, to your point, you made a good point saying there's lots of nonconforming lots in town. And I guess if we took the, the reasoning that you've brought today, that any nonconforming lot in town can make the case that if they have, and there are some nonconforming lots that have buildings that need repair, that any of them can then double the size based on just coming in here and saying that their lot is small and that they can't move out, especially the ones at a lake. So it's like where I'm having trouble is the same place I've had trouble all along, is if that's how I'm reading this bylaw, I'm not sure why they would write it if, because it doesn't seem like it would apply to anyone. Because everyone would come in and make this very same argument. And so that's, that's a struggle that I've had.
And to be honest, they have. There've been a number of, of expansions by special permit that have been approved or more than doubled the space that previously existed.
This is, the one, the one you gave us today does not.
Well, I didn't, I didn't, I was, I was looking at specifically a damaged structure. I'm happy to go back and review, you know, the last few, few years of, of any expansion that was raised and rebuilt. But I know there, there, there were multiples from what I saw where an expansion was, was more than fifty percent. Now, in the end, is it substantially detrimental to the neighborhood? And that's where you get to, you know, everybody putting in forty-foot-tall structures. And, you know, I, I think that there's a, there's a degree of reasonableness with, with what I'm trying to do under the conditions that I have and, and, you know, what the, the constructs of the, of the bylaw allow and what has been approved by the board. I'm not trying to, trying to skirt anybody. I've, I've been, you know, given everybody the, the writing information, the same information. The, the issue really is whether it's going to be detrimental. And I think a new structure there is not going to be detrimental to the neighborhood. It's going to be an enhancement fundamentally.
Who owns the property next to that?
It's, it's in a trust.
But who owns it?
I'm the trustee.
You're the trustee of the, the house next to it?
Yes, my daughter-in-law basically owns the house next to it.
She's not going to care. She's not going to care.
Oh, I understand. The people behind him are going to care.
I don't think there's anybody behind you.
No, there's, there's a house, there's a house across the street and, and really his, his view doesn't change. The way his windows align, he would be on the, on the side of the new house that doesn't have a second story. It would have a shed, just a shed roof, little three pitch. So he would be looking at the same view that he has. Likewise, the, the, um, I don't want to, I don't want to quantify it, but the, the, the structure that's at, diagonally across the street on the, on the other side has basically this, a three or four-car garage and a living space for. Their view wouldn't be interrupted because they too would be looking at the lower portion of the, you know, shed roof line. They wouldn't be looking at the expanded, um, height. And as it is today, the expanded height is completely obscured by a, a, a large...
This tree?
Thirty-foot, thirty-foot tree.
That tree.
No, not this one. This is a written maple, but there's another one, right? You can basically see it right there. That's about, that's about thirty feet tall. So that's over the height of the, the new structure that would be there.
Anybody from the board? An opinion?
I think you need a variance for the height of the building. You asked for a variance for the foundation height, not the height of the building.
Well, I asked for, for relief from 67D, 167D.
8D.
That's what, that was the, the sticking point with building inspectors. That was clearly identified as an issue.
The house down the street from you, it looks like eleven. Looks like they've expanded it quite a bit.
There have been a number of them. Like I said, I didn't go through all of the lists because I thought my, I thought the proposal was recent.
They put a second story in there?
I can't tell. I'm looking at a satellite.
I know they did. They've done one at, I believe, Eleven Ocean where they added a second story?
Recently too, right? Because when I drive down Montbonds, I know that they've added a second story to something.
I'll also tell you, if, if you're paying attention to that, many of, of the people are coming in and asking for a second story, which I can't think of any off the top of my head right now. You can also, you, you also heard me complaining about these four A, B, C, D under 167-8 because they are preventing people from coming in and improving their property because they are remarkably strict. And so what this, what this doesn't say, and this is what we've been struggling with for years on this board, what this doesn't say is, uh, can exceed it to a certain percentage or, uh, you know, cannot exceed, there, there's also a, a restoration section that can't be worth fifty percent more than the original value of the house. So if it's, if it's a dilapidated shack, people can't build a house on it. So they're, they're written in these absolutely asinine ways. I can't, you, you've, you've mentioned that there's a bunch of these decisions that we've allowed people to add a second story onto a house that was a one-story house. I, I can't think of any.
I don't really think they've come before us. That's the thing. I think they might have just gotten approved because it wasn't a renovation. And it's like, it's almost screwing him because he asked for a renovation instead of just an addition.
I have a particular hardship because of the damage. The worst of the damage we would be having would be completely different.
Well, specifically to your point, this is a restoration. So in, the idea that, that it is damaged or destroyed, needs to be repaired or rebuilt, is literally in the bylaw. So in that specific section, it says the restoration can't be, exceed the original area by fifty percent and can't exceed the original height. So that's not variable.
Well, there is, there is the variance from 67D and then there was the special permit. Okay, there are two, there are two, two tracks.
Yep.
So under a special permit...
And in both, so we could issue the special permit, except it says we can't. And in the variance, we have to have some sort of substantial hardship that you need that second story. You want it. I don't know why you, you have a hardship and you can't continue to live in that house without it. I, that's what I'm missing. And that's where the height piece comes in. Like the, the renovation, I understand, the, the, I don't know what the, the exceed, both of these things have to do with that second story. And if it's a variance, you need to, the state law requires you to have, to have some substantial hardship. And I'm not sure if topography of the land, because you have a small lot, because you can't expand out, give, is enough of a hardship that you add a second story.
Well, I could expand it. I could expand to the rear.
You could. That would be a separate variance question and I, and I'm not, right. I, I don't think that would be approved either. I wouldn't be comfortable with that either.
By asking, by asking for, for a second story, you're, you're creating your own hardship.
Well...
You're creating a hardship for us to make a decision in your favor.
Well, let's, let's, let's theorize. If, if I had the roof changed, the roof was, was pre-existing, would you allow me to expand to the second floor to use it? See, this, this, it's a, it's a, it's a...
Not if there is not living space up there.
Under a restoration...
Under a special permit.
But you're asking, so you're asking, tonight you've asked us about a permit from 2019 with no plans that I don't necessarily remember. You've asked us hypotheticals, but none of that's in front of us. What's in front of us is the same stuff we've been talking about for months, which is either a variance, which potentially you asked for, and I'm not sure what the hardship is, or a special permit that the bylaws say, and I'm as frustrated by you by it, say that we can't issue it. So, and I'm not sure where we go from here.
I did review the file for old place and that's what was in it.
Okay.
So there was no architecture.
We're not here, we're not here to do old place. We're here to do this application right here. We can't, we're not gonna, we're not gonna sit here and compare this one to that one. What, what we have in front of us is your, your building.
Right.
And we have to make a decision and... What's, what's, what's your, I mean, I can't, they tell us that it's not allowed. If you want to build it, build it the same way that, that the height that it's in right now. You know, take the roof off, rebuild the roof or remodel the whole, whole house, start from scratch or whatever you want to do. Build it the same way that it was before. It's allowed. But to go up and, uh, almost double, we can't make that decision.
Or change the bylaw.
Yeah, well, you know, we gotta change the bylaw.
Just so you know, we are working on changing the bylaws. It's going to take another year before... Well, I've, I've read Mark Brodsky's comments and I, I've, I've met him, so I'm, I'm aware of non-conforming and special permits and variances. And I don't think that, that, again, fundamentally it comes down to whether you believe, regardless of what the variance is, regardless of what the expansion is, do you believe that that's fundamentally substantially detrimental to the neighborhood?
I don't think that question, I, I understand what you're asking and in a, in a variance situation, if everything else is met, you're right. I think that's, that's where it comes down to. Should we grant that or not? If it's going to be a, you know, derogation of character in the neighborhood arena. We can't even get to that question because we can't get past the, the gates of the special permit based on the bylaw or the variance based on the hardship. We can't even get to your, your reasonableness question because the reasonableness question isn't even, we're not even at that step. That's step three and I can't get down either of these roads to get to that step.
Well, the hardship, the hardship was the damage.
Nope, I would disagree with you on that. That, the damage is discussed in the bylaw.
But I can, I can, under, under the restoration bylaw, I can expand to the rear.
But not more than fifty percent?
But not more than fifty percent.
That's where we can't get past.
Well, you'd have another problem with expansion, which is I think A or B in that same section. That just doesn't happen to apply here because you didn't ask for it. But you're asking for more hypotheticals that don't exist.
The, the building inspector may give me a building permit to...
I doubt it because he didn't give you this one. He probably won't give you for A or B either, for expansion or, yeah.
But under the restoration bylaw, I am allowed to increase up to fifty percent as long as I don't intrude on the, on the setbacks.
No, that's wrong. Because in A or B, there is an extension of a nonconforming use. So if you tried to expand past the footprint, you'd run into the expansion section.
Before we go any further than this, do you have plans for this?
Yes.
Do you have plans that show what you want to do?
Yes.
We have them.
Yeah, we have. They're in here somewhere. I think they're in here. We saw them a while back. It's just been a while.
It's just...
Yeah, yeah.
I've given you everything I can give you.
I feel like if you did...
We're just going around in circles.
No, I know. I feel like if he like fixes the way it was and then went back for a building permit, we wouldn't even be seeing it. So it would have to be like a two-stepper. Where it's a renovation, where it's a renovation, it's kind of sticking you.
Yes.
You want to do it all in one step, which is much more cost-effective. Totally understand that.
Well, it's, it's much more upfront.
Right, but it seems like the way the law's making you do it is doing it in two steps.
Yes.
And it's unfortunate that we have to follow that.
Well, again, I don't think you do. I think, I think you, the zoning board of appeals through, through a special permit and or variance can streamline that. And of course, you know, it's been a number of years now, so this is no big rush to me. But I do want to, I do want to do it. I do have, do need a hobby. So I do want to get it done.
Coming to these meetings...
This is a hobby, yeah.
You know, if, if you deny the permit, I'm going to have to make a decision on whether, whether to pursue it. If, uh, whether that means I go to court or whether that means I just go in and get a building permit to change the roof line and do it, as you say, do this two-step, three-step, replace one wall at a time and one foundation slab at a time. I could certainly do that.
I feel like that's how the bylaws are backing us into a corner where they give us not more than fifty percent. If you were to say, okay, we, you know, we want to, I want to rebuild this and I want to add the bathroom. We'd be like, oh, okay, that's fine. I'm adding a hundred square feet. And that's what this was.
And that's what people do.
That's what this was. They added a hundred square feet. And I think that's why it wasn't an issue. They changed the height, but they only added a hundred square feet. They didn't exceed that more than fifty percent.
And they can come and ask to add another hundred square feet.
I think it's going to have to be two-step so that it doesn't back us into a corner. It's unfortunate, but I think that's how it has to be.
Oh, are we going to ninety-nine, look, Roman? For now?
It's a pleasure of the board.
I personally don't care. I think...
I mean, the, the reality, I don't, I don't know, I, I don't know how people are going to vote. You have the, you always have the opportunity to withdraw without prejudice. So I want, I want to make that statement very clear before we vote on anything. We've, we've, to, to your, your legal piece, we, we reached out to our Turner, we heard, attorney, we heard back with that same argument, saying that it's very clear in state law and very clear in our bylaws that, that the, the application can be denied.
You could, you could come back, you can withdraw without prejudice, come back with a different set of plans.
Yep.
What you want to do, that won't, that will, won't set you back two years. If we deny it tonight, you have two, you, you get two years to come back. If you go without, you know, you know, without prejudice, then you can come back next month or two months from now and with a set, new set of plans, what you really want to do with it and in your mind or heart, what you want to do with this property and we'll look at it this way. The way it is right now?
I think, I think tonight we should either close the hearing or vote on the petition. That's what I think. And if you're interested in withdrawing, I think that we can, but this is...
It's up to you. I think you need a variance for the height, additional height with a living area under the roof. And even in the notice of public hearing, the only variance we asked for was the height of the foundation. And even if you did ask for a variance, to Peter's point, what's the hardship? A damaged structure is not a hardship because you can rebuild it to how it was existing.
So you can withdraw, we can vote on it?
It's your call.
Well, I would like to poll the board on whether they believe it's a, a substantial detriment to the neighborhood.
That's not, that's not our...
The issue is the fifty, it's more than fifty percent. Is, I think what all of our issue is. Because that's what says we, not more than fifty percent. I think that the law is sticking in this moment that you have to do it.
You have two choices. Do we vote on it tonight or you withdraw without prejudice?
Well, then I guess I'll withdraw it since you're not going to approve it. I'm not interested in putting you behind a rock and a hard place, but...
Well, that's what you're doing. You're putting us between a rock and a hard place to, to vote on something that the, you know, the council has already told us, if you vote on it, you have to deny it. We're giving you all the, we're giving you opportunity to withdraw without prejudice, come back with a set of plans, the way you want to do it.
You've, you've heard our thoughts and feelings about it. Then you have, you have a hardship issue. Or as Tina had said, you build it the way it is, you get a permit for adding a living area.
Like you extend your height, you rebuild it the way it is and then you just go in for the permit to finish the space. And now you've done it in two steps. You've gotten what you wanted, but it didn't... but it didn't come with the rebuild, which is not more than 50%. But I personally, like, I go, that, we can't do that. This was 100 square feet difference. This is 600 square feet difference, and 600, or 500 square feet and 600 square feet perhaps.
Yeah, it's a percentage.
It's a large percentage. But I don't think it's bad on the...
I'm gonna make a motion to close the hearing on petition number 984. And then we can do whatever we want to.
I'll second that.
We're gonna close the hearing on 984. He seconded it? Yes?
Yes.
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 Myself, yes. And you want to withdraw without prejudice?
I'll withdraw.
We need to have you sign a piece of paper that you would...
So, yeah, I mean, I think the reality is, you don't have to do that right now. We closed the hearing, so the clock has stopped, so the, if, over the next month, yeah, you want to send a letter in, and then if we don't get the letter probably by the next meeting, we maybe have a vote on it, one way or the other. So...
Sorry.
Right.
And we'll see you again. I knew you'd come back again.
Probably not.
Or maybe not, like, you know.
I'll do it the way everybody else does it. You probably won't see me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. What are we doing here?
We have a...
This discussion, they waited.
596 Mariposa Street, request for extension on variance.
Yes. That's me. I'm Bob DiAgostino. I own a property. I'm really not asking for an extension, and I'd like to explain why.
You're not asking for an extension?
Not yet.
It's just a discussion.
A discussion. You want to discuss it?
I would like to discuss it first.
Come on.
This is a, this is a... I don't know if you remember, I went through this whole process real soon when we were trying to get the variance.
Yes.
And it was a horror show, if you remember. You couldn't know, you couldn't determine how much to do with pieces of property. And you agreed with a lawyer, and I agreed with a lawyer, so we see it tonight. Well, what I want to tell you that you must, if anybody rides by, which I know you do all the time, all I've done is work on the property. I've got a septic design, the DEP has been in conservation, I've met all their requirements. I had a demolition commit to take a 3,000-square-foot building down to replace it with a house, La House, I don't know if you guys know what I'm like. Got to commit to put up a fence, graded it all off, and I keep on working to do this. And about a year ago, when Inspector Perry came here, I went down to him to explain to him what we're gonna do, just because I wasn't in a hurry to build a house because of the cost at the time. It wasn't the right time to do it. And they misplaced the plans. We had everything. We've recorded, by the way, but we had a building permit. I got a building permit from Rob, subject to Mean Bridgeman to have recorded it, which we did all day. I have everything, there's nothing I haven't made better place. He gave me a building permit. I went down when Perry got in here, and I just wanted to freshen him up and tell him what we were doing. And as he asked me about the building permit, because I was taking the building down, I had everything, so he saw that. And he said, we can't find the plans. They're either in the cellar or in the ceiling or someplace. So, I goes, that's all right, we have everything. We have the full works. Four months went by. I went down again, I had to make an appointment. He's not quiet if I did, so I go, yeah, I'm gonna build tomorrow, you know. I goes, I've got everything. It's simple, just give it to you. They still haven't found them as of like, three weeks ago. So, I asked Mr. Solari about, I wanted to just tell him what I was doing. Just tell him where I'm at, just like I'm telling you. And I went to the board to help, they're fine, I can go put a septic system in tomorrow if I want, except for the town has to do something with the water lines, just to keep you updated, because all of it done there is work. All I do is work there to clean it up, and you know it was a dumping site, right? It's just debris all over the place. So, we're at this point where I would like Mr. Whitney to explain to you, and it's only because of what the building inspector had said. He would rather have us come here and ask you for determination.
The last building inspector or the previous?
Right now, Mr. Solari. And he just felt, I mean, he didn't want to hear my story, really. He didn't want to hear that I've done all the work, and I exercised everything that I've had to do there, especially the, I exercised the variance. And that was the key to this conversation tonight. And if I could have Mr. Whitney talk about that.
Thank you.
Mr. Whitney is the one that came to the Zoom to get that, the return of...
I just want to explain, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you, Mr. Perry. He kept on, Mr. Agostino.
Why did you, why did you take a section of that fence out and put it back in again?
Who's telling the fuck?
Just a curiosity.
I figured it was, I figured it was the wind.
It wasn't, but I was flipping gate up and reinforcing it, and I wanted to paint the poles, which I never got a chance to do. I had a heart attack, and I couldn't finish it. Just two weeks ago, I had a hip replaced, so I've kind of like, been out of commission, you know, but... You're kind of curious, weren't you? Do you have a different thought than mine?
Yes.
So, it was the spring of '21 when all of this came to bear. Spring of '21, particular winter, I guess, of '21, February, the first time. Mr. and Mrs. Agostino came here for your board, hoping to build a source which they have lived at 596 Mariposa Street. It was a small home, they came looking at it in hand, that encompasses not only their lot, but the lot next door. There was a woman by the name of Joan Cattigan. Joan Cattigan, you might remember, was an auctioneer, a trader. She was a friend of Ruby Cook, Ruby Cook ran the auction upstairs of the property for years. I might be dating myself at this point, because that was many, many years ago. So, they came before you board, and what they were asking for was dimensional variances and wanted to go ahead with their building plans. And your board, after three or four meetings, was kind of about to grant those variances on the basis, as you mentioned earlier, that there was a hardship, financial or otherwise, that related to the shape of our property and soil conditions, just exactly as the law states. There was a hardship, in fact, because it's on the pond. It's on the pond, it was an odd-shaped lot, and they did need to combine it with the lot next door in order to make the proposal work. So, it was April of '21 when the pair of hits was granted. By June of '21, they went to your then-existing building inspector. I think his name was Peggarelli at the time. And they asked for a permit, a building permit, so that they could go forward with their project. You'll see in the package of materials, that building permit, it's dated June of '21. And so, they then began moving the earth, building the fence, clearing the property, raising the building next door, and purchasing the property next door, so that they could go forward with their plans. I would suggest to the board that all of those activities, our activities, exercise of the rights that they were granted under the variance. So, because they couldn't find a file, you'll see in that building permit, that they issued it subject to the recording of the variance and purchase of the lot next door. Mr. and Mrs. Agostino did both of those things, and you'll see evidence of those things to the property next door. And you'll also see the recording application on your variance at the front of Towne and River Street fees. So, they did what they said they were going to do, and they went forward with their project. Now, they then checked back in with the building inspector, who at that point was Mr. Perry. And Mr. Perry said again, he couldn't find a file, so the building permit didn't get issued. And then, most recently, they came to Mr. Solari and asked him for a building permit to go forward with their project. I spoke to Mr. Solari last week. I don't know if he's had an opportunity to speak to any of you. But essentially, what Mr. Solari told me was that when Rob and Kathy presented to him and requested the permit, he was a little reluctant to do it because, as this board as well with 48 Section 10, says that if rights under the variance aren't exercised within one year, those, the rights expire. And you can ask for a six-month extension, but that six-month extension must be requested within the one year following the date of the grant of the variance. In our case, April '21 was the grant. The request would have been, would have been proper before April of '22 for a six-month period. That's all that the law seemingly allows. So, when Mr. and Mrs. Agostino came to see me about seven to 10 days ago and told me if they liked, I said, you know, we could go to the board and ask and see if they would extend the variance that was granted back in April of '21. But I don't think the board has the right to do that under 48 Section 10. It would be more appropriate to go and ask the board for a determination that in fact you have exercised your rights under the variance. You bought the lot next door, you put up the fence, you raised the building. All of that was done in reliance on that variance that was granted in 2021. Now, when I spoke to Mr. Solari, his words to me were, "I don't have any skin in the game. If the board says, yes, you've exercised your rights, and therefore the variance is alive and well, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna be happy with that. At least I have somebody backing me up, and I'll issue the permit to Mr. and Mrs. Agostino." So, I'm not sure what the board's flavor would be, what the board's feeling would be, but what we'd like to ask is that you just make a determination that in fact they have exercised their rights under the variance, and that the variance is alive and kicking, and therefore they can get their building permit from Mr. Solari. There is a case that I included in the materials, and it's Foley versus Hayes. And it stands for just that proposition. There have been cases in the past, I quote, that have litigated this issue, that a variance was granted for one reason, that the structure didn't go up. But people who got the variance acted in the right time, whether they were cutting up a piece of land and selling it to somebody, or whether they were in fact buying a piece on their next door, or whether they were moving the earth, what constituted exercise of the variance. And the case law is pretty clear, and I think they make out, Mr. and Mrs. Agostino, make out a very good case that in fact they have exercised their rights under the variance. Again, I think, and I won't speak for others, but I think from my experience having come before the board at the time the variance was granted, it seemed like there was a good feeling that this was a good project and substantial...
So, you had a building permit in April of '21?
June of '21.
What happened to that permit?
That permit is there.
It was a building permit?
Yeah, it's a building permit, but it's subject to recording the variance and finding what...
You went for another building permit recently?
No, I actually, I actually, I was gonna clear that up. I actually went there, like, I'm coming in to update this, Mr. Solari, so that he knew where I was coming from, because, like I said, the cost of building the house just was up. And we don't need a house, but I've been at that particular piece of property for the past 15 years, so this is nothing new to me. But, but when he looked at it, he just tossed it aside. I was trying to explain to him what I just explained to you, that, what I was doing, and for him to be ready. Because when I'm ready, I mean, we went through, we just went through the pandemic, and it was just, it was just not the right time to do it.
Right.
And I understood way back, as soon as I took that building down, this was a serious thing, as far as to exercise the variance. You had a building, I had a building that was up, and the foundation was 90 feet long. It was 38 feet wide. It was a big building. I mean, this back pot was down, but the foundation and the wooden hall was there. But I felt, right up till two weeks ago, I talked to Mrs. Solari. Once I took that building down, I thought I was just, I kicked back, and I just graduated. Every day I'm down there. No one can take that away. I knew this would always say you're there all the time. I took seven days a week, just cleaning, picking up, because it was nasty. The water was nasty. I got permission from the conservation to go into the water and pick up the riddens and docks and everything that was in the water there. But as soon as I took that building down, I felt pretty comfortable that I was, I had exercised anything and everything that this board gave me as far as to go forward and not have to worry about. I never heard about an extension, never. I've never. And I've built a few houses in East River Drive. As far as...
You took the building, you took all the building stuff down?
Gone.
And added on the extra lot that hadn't been on?
It was two lots.
Because I remember a lot of, I think you said this just now, but a lot of, a lot of the setbacks were reliant, and the septic, I think, too, was reliant on that extra lot, right?
That's right.
We stayed 100 feet from the water.
Yeah.
And...
I always thought it was, the building inspector made the determination whether you'd been doing work. I think we've run into this before.
I think it's because as we've gone through a whole bunch of buildings...
We've gone through a bunch of, yeah.
And I'm gonna tell you that paperwork did disappear, because all the paperwork for my street is gone.
I don't think we can make a determination. We can give an opinion, I guess.
Yeah, I think that's...
You can make a determination, but...
But I don't think it's up to us to determine. It's up to the building inspector.
No, the building inspector essentially has determined that. He has said that he won't issue the permit unless you folks give him...
But what is, what is the law? Who?
Give him a good blessing, what law?
Who determines?
He's due an appeal of the building inspector's decision to not make a decision.
Excuse me.
I think that's it.
If you look at 167 dash 21 of your bylaws, it says, "Appeals to hear and decide. An appeal by any person agreed by reason of his inability to obtain a permit from any administrative official under the provisions of National law 48."
But he has a permit.
But it's expired. It's expired.
You can't get a building permit.
Yeah, that one was... I was passionate about that to be active, if that was the case.
So, that one's expired.
As long as we could determine that I had exercised my right for the variance.
So, that building program...
So, then I think my opinion applied for another permit.
I would.
If he denies it for reasons of variances, then you come to us.
I have no problem with that.
That's my...
I said that on the way in, and I said, I don't have a problem with that.
Is it an alternative?
I think that's...
But if he, if he shows that he's been working on the property, keeping up with the variance, then I think the variance is still good, and he gets a permit.
Yeah, but the building permit's over two years now.
No, but then...
But he needs to get a new building permit. And then if he doesn't, if he won't issue the building permit after he applies for one, then he comes to us. I think you're right.
Explains everything to us, and if we side with you, and you go back with the only approval. So, my belief, and I think Peter also... You apply for a new building permit. If he denies you feeling as though the variance is out, now boy, because it's expired, and you haven't done enough work on the property, then you appeal his decision not to give you a building permit, you come and find us. And then we determine.
Well, I think that's already happened. That's why...
But this is just a discussion.
So, we would need a formal...
He went, he went to the board, the building inspector. The building inspector said, "I will not issue your permit because your, it, variance has expired."
So, then we would need a denial.
Did he get a letter?
Deny letter.
He has to give us a denial letter.
You would need to file an application as well. Right now, we're just, we're having...
It sounds like he punted, but he needs to actually make the kick. Like, that's, that's right.
He needs to get the denial letter. As soon as you get that filed, the...
So, these folks, they just gotta come before you. They gotta come before you.
He's mistaken. I think it's because he's new. He doesn't know how it works.
Yeah, but there's nothing we can do.
Yeah.
We need something that's...
Right. And it's, it's...
Then we can, yeah, then we can act upon it.
You want a letter, you're right. Because right now, we're just in the...
It's on the agenda as an appeal, and, you know, I don't think anybody's gonna show up, but if they wanted to, they could, and we...
But you also have to...
Ask him to put it right, and what did he say in words last week?
Right, yes.
So, can we...
What you need to appeal is to...
Have a hearing before your board sometime in the near future?
It's July 10.
July 10.
July 10.
July 10.
It's the next meeting.
But you need to, you need to appeal his decision also. So, you need a formal petition in front of us.
So, once you get the letter, take the letter and then go file the appeal, and then it will end up...
File the appeal, and it'll be in front of you July 10.
Yes.
If you, yeah, it's gotta be in by a certain date. I'm not sure what the date, the date...
Yeah.
But, yeah.
Tomorrow, apply. Okay, tomorrow you go and apply.
If you can get the letter of denial tomorrow.
Yep.
Yes.
I mean, he only works, what, four or five hours a week for you?
I'll say this, if you're going to go in there and have another conversation with him. From, and I'm only speaking for myself, it, it sounds like you've been doing stuff down there. And it sounds like you've acted on stuff we've asked you to do two years ago. So it, it doesn't seem unreasonable that he would issue a building permit to you. So I'll say that with the camera on, but, but I don't know the details of it. It's just what you're telling me. So, but the reality is you could go up there, he could issue it because he doesn't want to write the denial letter and go from there.
Does he have an email?
That'd be the fastest way for it to happen.
Is there an email? They haven't asked him for the denial letter. I'm sure he could whip that up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
He's not enough to talk to. I talked.
Oh, good.
And you have bought the land, you want the owner of the land and anything else, man, okay?
Yeah, it should be pretty straightforward.
Okay, great.
Thanks, honey.
Well, thanks for the guy who sent, we'll be back and see you enjoy it.
Or you'll get a building permit.
Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome. Was that it?
Well done.
Do you know what's funny is now that, now that I looked at that first one I looked at, my friend's been living in that in-law apartment for four years.
Oh, in the very first one?
Yes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Yeah, that's actually.
That's for after the adjournment. What else? We get nothing else? We get minutes? We get approved? Oh, crap. We get minutes.
Motion to adjourn.
Do you want to approve the minutes?
Four minutes.
We get two minutes here and there. Jeez, you got things to do.
He's got to work and hold up that thing down there.
Yeah.
You better have a motion to, for the minutes for April 10, 2022.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 10, 2022.
All in favor?
I'll second. Yes.
2023?
2022.
Yeah, this is old.
Yeah.
Is it a typo? No, this is 23. This is 23.
It says 2022.
Well, not approved.
We got it, we got it.
Typo.
So no approval.
No approval. Needs to be changed.
Yeah, I vote no.
Nope.
Good eye. Look at you.
Yes, everything else below it says 2022.
And this is 2022 too on the second one. So let's hold off on that.
The other one's wrong too.
Yep.
Copy and paste.
Listen, it gets me through the jacks, so. All right, I'll make a motion to adjourn. Forget nothing else.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes. All right.